This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, so everyone's here. I will open this meeting on the city council finance committee side. I'm the acting chair since Dan unfortunately is unable to join us tonight.
You need it.
And I'll go ahead and open this for the school committee finance chair as well.
Great. Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here. I know that this was a bit of a scheduling. It was a little tough on scheduling. So on this side, we've got for my agenda, there's mayor's communication. The mayor's not here. I will speak, but there's no one from the public here. So the first item on our agenda is the discussion of the FY23 budget and request. And is that where we were going to discuss? Sorry, I'm kind of playing catch up on a little bit of this. Is that where we're going to discuss the questions that we had from over the course of last few weeks? Why don't we do that now? I think that's what this is supposed to be. So Alison, you were able to get.
Yes, we received questions from councillor Rist and from you, Tom, and from Connie just sent us some comments and wasn't sure or should be here, but we've got some answers. So Nick has some responses to the questions. I'll let Nick kind of take the lead, but of course, if more questions come up, just we jump in.
Just for the record, and you know, the council is sending some question through email for the public that you or someone can read it.
Yeah.
They probably will know.
We did not share any responses.
No, no, I know you're saying that I just like for the public to know which.
Yes.
What the council was.
So I don't know if you want to. We received the questions from councillor Rist first. If you want, I'm happy to read them.
Cool. I'll start with those.
Sure.
Well, can I just make a recommendation so that it's, I think, might be a little bit cleaner and clearer is that as that if Nick's going to be answering this, Nick can just start by reading the question that he's then going to answer. Then he answers that question and then we read the next question. Instead of just reading out a bunch of questions, I think it's going to be better to list them with the answer along with them. So that'd be my recommendation on how to proceed.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I just want to give the caveat that I typed up some notes in terms of answering the questions and I did read back the questions a little bit in my notes. So what I'm going to be reading is not verbatim, but what the like, what the whole, because some of the some of the questions, you know, were connected to other sentences that weren't really necessary for me to make my notes, if that makes sense. So maybe, you know, I don't know if that would be acceptable or if somebody would actually like to read the full question before I answer it.
Are you suggesting that some people on this committee are not concise in the way that they write?
No, not at all.
I'm the worst about it. Just whatever works for you. I mean,
He's a new guy, Tom. He doesn't know that you're kidding.
As long as we get, as long as we get the content, I think it's, it's fine.
And I think it's, you know, it may open up a follow-up question that someone might have.
Sure.
All right. Well, I'll begin with councillor Rist's questions because those were the first ones I received. The first question was, he was inquiring about the primary reasons for budget increases from year to year. He mentioned that, you know, and this is playing on the document that Dr. Leclerc shared, that salary increases overall, you know, factor in three to 4% of, you know, an increase from year to year. He mentioned that it's primarily due to the collective bargaining agreement, or that's what he assumed. He asked when the collective bargaining agreement expires. He mentioned that Mountain View has a major increase and then followed up with asking if Mountain View's operating expenses spreadsheet includes staffing additions due to the use of grants. So my response to that would be that teacher salary increases are certainly a result of the collective bargaining agreement. You'll see, you know, from year to year, really two types of salary increases. One would be a result of a cost of living adjustment from year to year. You may frequently hear people say that, you know, we're getting 2% this year, 2% next year, and you know, what that is, is that's their cost of living adjustment. However, there, you know, sometimes educators move up steps as well. Depending upon if, you know, if they've gotten enough credits to move from one step to the next, or they've had enough years of service within the district to move up. Or sometimes they move over on the salary scale, what we would refer to as a lane change. Because they got, they went from a bachelor's degree to a master's degree or masters to masters plus 30. So when you throw all that in a blender, that's where you would get the 3% to 4% from year to year. It's, you know, often you only hear about the cost of living adjustment, like the 2% that's in the current CBA. So one might wonder why the overall income is higher than that. And the result is because people advance in steps or change lanes. Our current CBA expires on June 30th of 2024. So next year at this time, we'll be thinking about negotiating for the next CBA. So we have one more year of the current one. In each of the three years that our current CBA covers, a 2% cost of living adjustment increase, it was agreed to. So next year, the entire salary scale, all the amounts on it would increase by 2%. And I already mentioned that, you know, many teachers move up steps or change lanes. So that's really what factors into the increase in salaries. Getting to the Mountain View School portion of councillor Rist's first question. The Mountain View operating budget spreadsheet does not include any grant-funded staff in it at all. So everything on that sheet that is being presented right now, those are all expenses and salaries that are part of the local school committee appropriation. None of the cost center spreadsheets include any of the grant-funded staff. So that's my response to the first question. I don't know if anybody has any follow-up question based on what I said, or if you want me to just move on to number two.
I just, Omar, I don't know if, can the people on the screen doing remote, can they see your
Yes.
screen.
Yep, they do. Yep.
I can.
Okay. So about midway down, I think you were referencing, I can't tell what line that is. Is that number 10?
Number nine.
Number nine. The difference in number nine. So remember, there's no previous year data. Because Mountain View School is new, so we combined all these schools and put them together, but there is an increase in that line. I think it's 14.99 or it's 14 point something. And that was due to the fact that we took some positions that were in district, the district budget and central office budget. Because they were shared amongst elementary buildings, like if Omar was a school psychologist and worked between center and Pepin, we kept it at central office in our budget. But then when we moved into the new school, we put all those people were only going to be in one cost location now. So we moved them out of the central office budget and moved them into the school budget because they were no longer shared among different elementary schools. So you increase there, but there's probably a decrease in another cost center. Whether in special ed or central office, it was one of those areas.
I see the line right above has a decrease, but.
Was it, is it similar?
It's like teacher professional.
Yeah, and it could be that. Yeah. So we just did a better job of accounting for where positions needed to be.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, Hadel has her hand up.
Sure, Hadel, go ahead.
Thank you. So for understanding purposes, when would you guys know that a teacher is earned an additional degree or have a license in hand and that person is going to move? Do we know it during when you guys are preparing the budget or it comes as a they come back in September or October and they say, here's my certification and I'm going to move up and puts in the request? How does that work?
We would know that when we are planning the budget for the following year. Because we allow teachers to notify us of when they're going to have a degree change. If you're studying, obviously you know, like, oh, I've got one more course. I've got two more courses. You know, your anticipated graduation date is in May. So you provide that information to us by January 1st of that calendar year so that we know that the following September, we have to, the following school year, we have to increase your salary. The unknowns are people that join the district over the summer. You know, someone leaves and they may, they might leave as a bachelor's step 13 or whatever. But then over the summer, we have to hire someone and they might come in at a master's step six. So that's where you come up with fluctuations in the salary bottom line.
So let's say one of the teacher leaves in with bachelors and another one is hired as a masters. We did budget, you must budget, assuming that this teacher is not going to leave. So let's say somebody is having $50,000 as a salary. The new teacher has been hired for $60,000. There's only $10,000 you are in deficit for that position in new fiscal year. Am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add something there, I think that's important though, is remember, we have, I'm not going to get the number correct here, but roughly what, 200 plus staff members here. And so it's not just like one position changes and suddenly we're in a deficit. We also have people who have a masters and retire and suddenly we're hiring somebody with a BA. So there's a lot of fluctuation that can happen in there that, that to a degree balances itself out. And that's part of, that's part of managing the budget and keeping on track of it throughout the entire year.
So. Go ahead. Sorry.
Go ahead, Hadel.
So does that mean that somebody keeps track of all the contracts and like hire and, you know, what do you call? Not hiring and firing, but hiring and coming on.
Separation.
Separation. Thank you. Separation. So there is a list. Oh, okay. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, I keep records of all that and Sue Colby also keeps records of all that. I present a personnel report to the school committee every month that shows the new hires and transfers and separations. And one thing I did in my prior district that I will do here as well when the time comes is I keep what I call a staff turnover spreadsheet that helps me, you know, really with the financial aspect of who comes and goes. So basically, that's how you figure out where you are in terms of, you know, the unknowns. You know, three people left, three new people got hired, most of which happens in the summer. But you just put in one column what the person who left salary was, and then in the next column, what the new person's salary is, and you see if it's more or less, and you know, that's how you manage it.
Yeah, just so I can kind of see the big picture, just to kind of what you all are dealing with, like I recognize there's a lot of fluctuation and you just gave an example of three left, three came in. Is that like roughly the range of how many people kind of come and go over the course of the year? Is it like as many as three people? Yeah, I know it can be, I know it can be very kind of fluid, et cetera, but just, just so I have.
Probably had, um, how many did we have this summer? We probably had 30 new teachers coming to the district this summer, 25, 30 new professional staff. And then our educators come and go like water. It's, we probably had 15 since September. So there's, it's, it's constantly adjusted.
Yeah. So that's very helpful. So with the 30 that were new kind of professional hires, that means you had 30 people who left in the last year.
Retired. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. So just, just a final comment because I want to make sure we're clear. When we begin the budget building process in the, in the winter, spring, one of the exercises that the business manager will take is he will take every single employee in the district and move them over to what their projected salary is going to be next year. So he will take into account, I know this person is getting a degree. They've been highlighted. So this person's moving over one column. This person's moving over one column plus down one step. This person's staying on this step, but only getting a 2%. All that is calculated in our, in our budget development process so that our payroll line is pretty close, except for the turnover in new positions. All that's back to that.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions on this? Or any more follow-up on this question from Dan, or should we move on to the next question?
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
You know, something to, when, I mean, I'm actually going to be starting the work Dr. Leclerc just mentioned next week, believe it or not. It's already time to start doing that. But folks that we know who are retiring, you know, it's sometimes it can be difficult to, you know, factor in what their, you know, replacement's going to make. So what we do is look at the type of position it is. You know, if you have somebody retiring who, you know, maybe is a world language teacher and is harder to find, you would budget a projected salary higher up on the pay scale for that. However, if you're budgeting for maybe a third grade classroom teacher, or there's, you know, likely quite a few coming out of colleges, you would budget something lower on the salary scale for that. Are you going to get it exactly right? No, there's, because it's just, there's too much unknown there. But, you know, when we present, you know, the budget to the committee in March, it will be as close as possible to, you know, it will be as accurate as it can be at that time.
Great. All right. So how about we move on to question two?
All right.
That was just one question. We could be here a while and I'm not going to lie. I was up watching those election results. So I'm a little bit sleepy.
He kind of already answered number two.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, number two just involved, you know, is anything grant funded in those spreadsheets that were shared?
This is city district funding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. No other funding sources are there. Not grants, not revolving funds, not, you know, nothing.
Present to our school committee what our grants are used for, but it's not part of what city council is approving or the mayor is approving for a budget.
That is true. I would be interested in seeing it if you had it though, just because it would, I think, help us to get a more holistic view of what goes on there and just what's the sort of flow is in terms of stable is a, that sort of thing.
I think it should be a separate, grants should be a separate night. There should be a night of their.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. We can do that.
Different, they have different calendar years that they operate under.
Oh, yeah. A hundred percent. All my point is just that I would be interested in learning more about that, but I, it doesn't have to be tonight. So he had a question about transportation.
Yeah, the third question was about transportation. He asked, is the, is the two mile rule creating new busing needs or are there other factors in play? Really, the major factor here is the consolidation of the three elementary schools into one. What this did was add five buses to our contract. Because not nearly as many students can walk to school as could in the past. I mean, your, your elementary schools are very centrally located. You had a lot more foot and bicycle traffic, you know, going to those schools. Mountain View not situated as close to population centers necessarily. So five buses needed to be added to our contract. Another factor is special ed transportation though. There was an increase in students who are placed in out of district settings, which then leads to an increase in special ed transportation costs. When we have a student that is placed in a private out of district school, we have to pay the transportation cost to go to that school as well. And, you know, sometimes they can be pretty far away. I mean, they're not, you know, they're not all, all very close. So, you know, we contract with a vendor to do that, but those, those routes can be quite pricey. So those two factors are the reason for the increase in transportation costs.
Could I ask a follow-up question on that one?
Sure.
When it comes to, you're saying that there's an increase in the number of students that are being placed in these out of district things. Is that just something that fluctuates from year to year, or is there sort of like any sort of systemic reason why there's an increase in the number of out of district placements?
I think the answer is that there is, it definitely fluctuates through the year. I think the pandemic has demonstrated that we have students that are coming out of the pandemic that have had some significant traumatizing experiences being at home and not exposed to the world. And they've required some supports that our regular school district could not handle. And then the other factor that comes into play is we have a community within East Hampton that takes on a lot of foster children. And sometimes foster children come with DCF placements already assigned to them. And we are mandated by law to continue to have kids go to those placements, no matter where they are.
Oh, that's super interesting. Okay. I was just, I didn't just to.
And so those are sometimes unknowns to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, now when you're doing stuff like, I guess, the bigger question, and this might actually mean that you don't have to deal with one of my questions later because I'm, this is theirs, is it the feeling of the schools? And it sounds like what you were saying is that in many cases, yes, that the needs that these students have, they're not things that the district is necessarily set up to provide. In other words, when a kid in being, you know, this was in one of these situations, it's not like a kid choicing out. You're like, ah, darn. You know, it is sort of like, okay, this, there's like a legitimate need that we're not necessarily configured to provide.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely going to touch upon that in the answer councillor Pete, to your question about the 14% increase in those tuitions.
Okay, great. Well, I mean, it sounds like we just sort of resolved that one, but yeah, we can definitely come back to that. Does anyone else have anything else on that one, or should we?
I just want to make sure I understood the DCF piece. So if I understood correctly, what you're saying is that there's a foster child in East Hampton now, but they came from Chickapi. They also come with that transportation need. They have to be bused to Chickapi. Is that my understanding?
That is one scenario. Yes, that would be a simple scenario, but a more complex scenario would be the child is in DCF placement and they are in a substantially separate program. Private, a private tuition-based school that when they come into foster care into a, into a home in East Hampton, we have to take on the cost of that private school tuition now and the transportation associated with that. Which could be in Worcester, Mass. It could be a, could be a special ed program in Greenfield. It could be anywhere.
And the other thing that Dr. Leclerc, I mean, you did a great job explaining, but I think you didn't state is that you could get a foster kid right in the middle of the year. And then you have to start that cost. So it's not something that you, like, if you knew about it in August, you might be able to make some adjustments, but you might get that, that child in November or January or February, and then you, you have that same cost that you just have to pick up immediately.
Okay, so then the, so the city of East Hampton is now covering the cost of this. Is this something that the state then reimburses the city for, or is this something that comes out of?
Well, I'm going to touch upon that when we.
It's called circuitry.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
It does reimburse us for a portion.
Okay.
And sometimes DCF will split the cost of a placement of a child as in, you know, a highly specialized, like a residential placement or something, you know, DCF will sometimes, depending on the situation, pay a portion of the tuition, but we want the rest.
That's very helpful. These words have been thrown around and I don't quite understand the, what is the scenario that we're talking about, right? And so that's very helpful. So I appreciate you saying that.
Of course.
All right. Hadel, I see your hand. And by the way, if we could just, I mean, I understand we're getting excited here and it's fine, but to the extent that we could raise hands, it would probably make this like, there's a little bit, a little bit of cross talk, but I think it's fine. But Hadel.
Thank you. Question is, how often we get new students? Like average, is it like one or 10 average? I'm not asking for an exact amount every fiscal year. But how, like how many students we anticipate? And so is it like we're going to get? Or it's just every year it varies?
Yeah, I would say every year it varies. I mean, you know, I, I don't have a lot of historical context for the East Hampton, but you know, in my work in Northampton and also in my work as a former principal, I can say it definitely varies from year to year. You know, when you build your budget, the first thing you do when you're looking at your out of district tuition costs is have a meeting with your special ed director and, and, you know, you figure out who's graduating first of all, because, you know, tuition would then come off. But also you look at potential students that you know of in district that may end up in an out of district placement. So you want to factor in for that. But beyond that, I mean, I would think maybe an average of, I don't know, Dr. Leclerc, one to two a year, if I really had to average it.
Oh, at least.
I mean.
I think that's very conservative.
And some years you could have none, but some you could have four. It just, it's really an unknown.
So when you guys do the budget, do you do an estimate? Like, do you put an assumption? Because it's all estimate at the end of the day with the budget. So do you put like a cushion, like, okay, let's say it's going to cost us $10,000, right? I know, I don't have the actual numbers. I'm just imagining numbers I'm picking up. So it's going to cost us $10,000. We are going to have, let's say $6,000 will be covered through other funding sources. We will be short by $4,000. So that $4,000, you guys, like, you know, you guys put it in an adjustment somehow? Or do you put it in an assumption like we're going to put this as a cushion in the budget for possible unforeseen situation? Is there some practice like that?
No. And I think that a correction I would make, Hadel, is we don't put estimates really in our budget when it has to do with concrete things. So for the students that we have in specialized programs outside of the district, we know what the cost increase is going to be in the tuition for the following year. We get a letter from that school that says next year, the cost of tuition will increase to this. So it's not, we don't fudge our budget. We put the concrete numbers in our budget for the concrete students that we have. We don't put money as a placeholder, like, let's pad this $50,000 in case someone decides they need to go to an outside placement. Our budget is concrete. We deal in concrete numbers. If we have a student that comes in after the budget is set, that is what we use our school choice revolving funds for. And that's why we have a conversation every single year with city council and the mayor. We can't put that down to zero. Because we can't be in a situation where we would have to come to the city council in November and say, a new student moved into the community that is requiring an out of district placement and will cost $200,000. That would give too much information away about student, you know, a student whose privacy needs to be protected.
Absolutely.
We, concrete numbers for the concrete students that we have.
That, actually, that was my second question. If you don't have question, then how do you meet at, at the end of the fiscal year, the expenses? So you answered that question.
That's what it is.
Yeah, it's school choice or circuit breaker. That's what I mean.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Should I go on to question four now?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, now, question four, Red. The PowerPoint FY23 presentation shows some staff reductions and many grant funded positions. What happens when the grants run out? Esser funds are a primary source. Again, what happens when the grants run out? I assume these positions are entitled to benefits. Do the grants pay for those benefits? Which I believe, Councilor Pete, this will touch upon a question you asked as well.
Yeah, I was redundant on this one.
Yeah, well, it's, you couldn't have known that, though. They weren't shared with anybody other than, and not only that, but it's a huge question considering the amount of salary we have in, in Esser. So my response to that would be some positions that are grant funded are sustainable from year to year, depending upon which grant funds them. An example of this would be positions funded by our Title I grant and our Special Ed 240 grant. Those are grants we get every year. The amounts may vary slightly from year to year, but we know we will receive those grants. Other grants, such as, you know, the Esser grant, those are a different story. The Esser funding will run out at the end of FY24. The positions that are currently funded with Esser dollars are budgeted as such through FY24, as well as for this current school year. So if you looked at that, and that, that PowerPoint was in the documents that Counselor Rist shared, right?
Yes.
So you would get a little bit of explanation about, you know, what came out of which grant on, on one of the slides in there. But when you look at that and you see the like 1.4 something million dollar figure with Esser, that number is for two years. That's not just this year. That's this year and next year. That's like the entire grant amount for the two years of salary. So knowing that that's going to dry up, it's important for the school department to prioritize which positions are necessary to keep and, you know, really to absorb into the local budget. The purpose of the Esser grants was, was primarily to help students and schools recover from the impacts of COVID-19, both academic and social emotional. Theoretically, these impacts will not last forever. I mean, you're always going to have students who have needs. But, you know, at some point in the future, though, we may not know when, and at this time, the impact that COVID had on students' education will be, won't be there anymore. Using a collaborative process that is, you know, both data driven and aligned to the district's strategic plan, we can determine where our students are and what their needs will be going forward as we make decisions about staffing resources that will be necessary for us to, to meet our goals and our students' needs. So, you know, really, the short answer is that there's going to have to be a collaborative process where we prioritize what's necessary to, to keep by absorbing into the local budget, you know, really through reallocation. You know, when you go through your budget building process each year, you look at enrollment, you look at, you know, i- if you need to absorb or add a position, is there something that you no longer need? You know, so you're not just adding a bunch of positions to a budget. You're, you're, you know, really trying to reallocate money you already have to fund the positions you now need, because what you needed 10 years ago might not be what you need next year. And then, you know, to answer the question about the benefits, these positions are certainly entitled to benefits. But the only benefit that the grant covers is 9% to the mass teachers' retirement system. So when we write a grant and there's salary in it, 9% of all that salary automatically gets chopped off the, you know, the grant total. The city never sees the revenue. It goes directly to MTRS. We, we still have to count it as revenue, because then it would look like the award was less than it was. But it's, we never see it.
So would that then mean that like health and dental and whatnot, those are being paid? Yes, okay. Counselor Dunham.
This is actually kind of related to my question around, I know it was very general aggressive, like your philosophy of what are you trying to, what do you try to accomplish? What are you thinking about? What is your approach to kind of addressing all of these issues, right? So if I understand now, the Esser grants, because I was trying to understand, okay, we've got this chunk of money, it's supposed to help something, but then the money's going away. So why wouldn't our budget go back to what it was in terms of thinking, how do we kind of support students, et cetera? So if I understand, these grants are to provide additional resources to students, either through counseling, mental health support, smaller classes, et cetera. Is that, is that my understand, am I understanding that correctly?
I would say so.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so that's very clear. Because I was, I'm actually at this conference right now. And one of the things that we were talking, it was about higher education, but they're talking about the impact of COVID having a lasting impact up to the class of 2032, right? So now that's, that's college students, but that might be a third grader who, right now, right? And so that's going to have a lasting impact. And so we're not out of this yet, right? And so if I understand, also, you are wanting to split this up over two years. And so the philosophy or the goal that you're trying to accomplish is to spread some of these resources out over a couple of years. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, we were trying to be fiscally responsible and not spend the money all in one shot.
Right. So the, so the idea is to spread the resources that students can access out over an additional two years until the state says, okay, well, gee, we have more issues with education and now we need to provide more funding. And that would hopefully get us to a gap, filling a gap of some kind. Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you. I, I understand that better now.
And actually, taking a look at this, I think some of these positions, when I looked over it the first time, I, without understanding the context, some of these words didn't mean a whole lot. But looking at it now, like it's social emotional learning coordinator. It's like, yeah, okay, you could see why you'd need extra help there right now. But ideally, you know, a couple of years out, you know, kids are maybe a bit more, have had some time to adjust a little bit and maybe, you know, necessary, I mean, it'd probably still be nice to have that person, because the world is traumatic in ways other than a pandemic, but-
So when I come to you asking for that in a few years.
You know, we can have that conversation. But I think there, I mean, yeah, but, but I, okay, I'm getting this now that you're, these are really, for the most, I mean, I see like there's a K38 STEM teacher, you're probably always going to want K38 STEM teachers. But for the most part, these are people who are being brought in to specifically help handle the social and emotional and educational impact.
And shore up academic, you know, deficits that children experienced over the pandemic.
But then hopefully, by the time the Esser funds run out,
Yes.
a lot of that work has been done to remedy a lot of that.
A STEM, a STEM teacher is science, technology, engineering, the arts and math. So it's, it's an additional teacher that can help support some of those extremely important content areas.
Right. Yeah, I just think that you're from the side of when, when we're talking about the city, I think there, you know, when, when I first saw this slide, you know, in Finance Committee, my first reaction is to be like, so in two years, or is the budget going to go up by, so it's 1.4 million, it's a $700,000, because-
From your ears, yes.
Like, is-
That would be nice, yes.
But that, because like, like if we, if we retained all of these people, that would be
Yes.
what we would potentially have to do.
You know, the other, the other piece is that we have not had a growth budget in a few years. We have not added positions. And to remain competitive to other communities that also have school choice, we need to add staff sometimes. And if there's no opportunity to do that in a city budget, then we look at grants to help us start to get things going and hope that we can find a way to find more grants to either keep them going or have a district that eventually picks it up.
Right. And I think that, you know, frankly, you know, with Prop 2 and a half, I think that is the case for a lot of departments. You know, it's hard to do too much growth with Prop 2 and a half. And actually, I want to come back to that. Once we're done with these questions, I, I want to add one extra question, because question one passed. And I'm curious what you think the fiscal ramifications that are going to be. But we should keep going with this for now.
All right. So I'll take that as my cue to move on to number five. Counselor Rist was under the impression that, like the city, the schools have a reserve account. But he said he couldn't find it on the spreadsheet. So he asked if it did in fact exist. And if so, how much do we have in the reserve and what is it protecting against? So we do have, I mean, what, what some may call a reserve account. Hold on one second. I'm going to shut the door of the room I'm in, because one of my dogs is squeaking a toy and I don't need you to hear that.
I'm very much of the Zoom policy that like dogs and cats and kids are always welcome.
Sorry about that. Like eventually she would have come in here and done that. And as cute as she is, not going to help us move this along. So, you know, we do have our, our school choice account, which some people may refer to as our reserves. I, I guess that's what it would be, for lack of a better term. It's used to offset our local budget, as well as to fund unexpected expenses, like we mentioned earlier, such as increases in out of district tuition, or if a student ends up being placed in a setting that we didn't anticipate. Or sometimes a family just moves into town and their child is already placed somewhere. You know, those, those kinds of things definitely happen. In FY23, $675,000 of school choice funding is budgeted to offset teacher salary. An additional $325,000 is budgeted to offset the increased transportation costs. So a total of a million, which was higher than anything Dale had ever budgeted before out of, out of school choice. If the school department does not receive an additional appropriation, the shortfall is going to have to come out of there, or at least most of it. You know, further school choice funds would be needed to offset that deficit, you know, created by the $561,000 cut. So basically, what this would do is leave less money available to offset the FY24 local budget, as well as less for us to fund unanticipated expenses that may come up. Our school choice account is not listed in those local budget Excel sheets that, that were shared with you. But at the beginning of FY23, there was $1,586,642 in the school choice account. So then the $1 million is budgeted to offset the appropriation this year. We anticipate receiving $747,620 in school choice revenue this year. That's based on, you know, basically the, the students that, you know, are, are choised into our district. Is that an exact figure? No, the state usually, they'll make a correction sometime next June. Usually it's in our favor, if that means anything to you, we end up with a little bit more. It, it's important to note that $693,128 in school choice funds beyond what were budgeted last year was used to cover the shortfall at the end of the year. So this made a total of $1,368,128 in school choice funds that were expended last year. Only 675 were budgeted. So we, we spent an awful lot more than anticipated last year. So as you can see, that level of funding does not match the revenue that we get annually and is thus not sustainable. I, I don't see that the school choice revenue going much, much higher than what we would get this year. I'm talking over time, just because, you know, we're kind of limited in the amount of slots we can open. You know, the school committee has committed itself to having reasonable class sizes. And, you know, while a, a new building certainly would be lucrative for people to want to school choice their, their students here, there's only so many slots we can open. Yeah, we're full. It's, that's pretty much, there's no room at the end. And, you know, we get $5,000 in revenue per student that is choised here, plus an additional, what's referred to as a special ed increment. If any of those students require special services that, you know, come with additional costs, and that's all calculated by the state, really. So, you know, for some students, we may get $25,000. But your, your base rate is 5,000 and it's been that way since, I, I don't know. I was probably in college when they set that. So that has not risen with inflation.
And if I could just add, just two quick comments. We've been talking theoretically a lot tonight about students that come into our community that are being placed out in special ed settings. But we also have, sometimes students move into the community that has an IEP that they bring with them, an individualized education plan, their special needs student. They come into the community and that might say in writing, they, this child requires a one to one aid. We haven't budgeted for that. And to Hadel's point, we didn't pad our budget for that. So where do we come up with that, the payment for that person? You know, we don't come to you and ask for it. We take it out of school choice. So when that comes into our district, we're required to abide by that. And I also want to point out to the committee, because you might be thinking, well, then why do you take those students for school choice? You have to accept school choice students blindly. So I cannot discriminate. If I see an application for school choice, I just know that it's an application for a first grade slot. I can't say, well, I'll take this child because they don't require any special services.
Or what I want.
No, no, what you want me to. So it's an unknown what I get.
Sure.
So, but that's where school choice revolving funds go. We don't pad our budget that we, you know, but we also don't come back to you for an appropriation when we need money for staffing.
Counselor Dunham.
So, so just in, in response to that, I think that's reasonable and great. And, and maybe I should know this answer. Is East Hampton known for something in particular that it provides students? And so parents outside of East Hampton are looking to get students into East Hampton? And is that something that we should be aware of in order to be able to budget accordingly for those instances?
We are a great school system.
Well, I, I believe that. I believe that.
We have brand new schools. I mean, we are attractive. You know, compared to our neighbors, we're pretty much fully staffed. We have great buildings. To answer a question that's going to come later on, we have developed several substantially separate programs for students with special needs in our schools. So that makes us attractive. We have small class sizes. There are a lot of reasons why we're an attractive school district. But that's the, that's the rub.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on this point? Hadel.
For my understanding purposes, like if, if we have a city department, so city side, we give X amount as an estimated budget, because there is no actual. And practically, I don't see being, everything being so transparent and down to penny actual. We, we do the best practices, not like cushion money into every department's- we we do the best practices, not like cushion money into every department's budget, but we do a close estimate onto any of the budgets. At the end of the fiscal year, whatever is not spent closes to general fund. I I see school doesn't do that. School uses every single penny out of the budget. And whatever the portion needs to be covered additionally, you guys use school choice money. However, the city side goes for appropriation because they don't have other way to um, you know, support the department. Um, like other department don't have a grant which we can support. Um, if we need money, we go to city council. Uh, so how how does that mechanism works when X amount of number is given to you um as a school budget and there's nothing going to general fund, but yet school choice has a um has a balance of a huge balance because if you're, if you're getting I don't have the exact numbers, but like eight hundred thousand as a revenue for our school choice in a fiscal year, you estimated that your expenses are going to be six hundred thousand dollars. So you still, at the end, it should be two hundred thousand dollars should be the balance, not somewhere in millions. So how does that work?
Well, the expenses for this year are a million. They're not six hundred thousand. So you you know, we're technically spending more than the revenue that's coming in.
No, no, no. Um, what I was saying, yes, it was a million, but you estimated six hundred, right? Is that?
Now, are you talking about last year or this year?
Last year, uh, twenty two, because I can't talk to twenty three as I don't have the full year. Um, and I can't see the revenue for uh projection for this year. Um, so I'm just trying to understand how the budget works and if 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 there really is a need to make it work as a best practices, even hearing that, oh, we will be needing this grant money can go tomorrow. I don't want city to have a huge deficit in the school department and we have to come up instantly. I rather um have like slowly build the budget in so we are not saying like, oh, we need five million dollar all of a sudden and have we have to struggle with that money versus in next five years, we will need five million. Let's start now with X amount and we'll be somewhere, we'll meet somewhere closer in 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 the budget financially. Do you see what I'm saying? It's like I don't want to see finances to be like next year I will need five million. Well, if you knew from last two years or three years, unknowns are always there. Why don't we build a have a best practice in place now so we don't struggle five years from now? Does that make sense? And that's what I'm trying to understand. Like, how does that work?
Um, well, I don't, I don't know.
I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, well, I don't have a lot of historical knowledge either, being new in my my chair here. I mean, you know, what I can tell you is that, you know, when you when you build a budget, you look at the funding sources that you believe are going to be available and, you know, you don't add a bunch of things on top of that. You, you know, you stay within, you know, what what you believe you're going to be able to fund and, you know, budgeting some money and uh from school choice to go against salary is something that, you know, probably most districts do. Um, because they know that, you know, they need more than their municipality may be able to give them in a given year. Um, where you run into trouble is when you have a ton of unexpected expenses on top of that. Because, you know, o- over time, what's left in your school choice account is going to shrink. Um, and if you're constantly spending more than you're taking in, you're going to hit a cliff. Um, you know, I I can speak from my prior district um who is going to hit a gigantic one at the end of this year in terms of their school choice. Um, and you know, I do not want to um put the city of East Hampton or the school department in that position ever.
If I can just add a specific to that, too. I think that there's always a challenge when we look out to future years. Um, but for an example to what you're speaking to, right, for us to be able to plan ahead. Uh, I think this year is a great example of that. We all knew that we were going to have an increase in transportation costs. We knew that by consolidating to a single school, everybody involved knew that there was going to be an increase in that cost. We didn't have a dollar amount to it. We didn't know how many buses it was going to cost. We had to wait till we got here to know the exact dollar amount. But we all knew that. Everyone who was involved with, you know, promoting the new school, we talked, it's in our slideshows of to the community. So we knew there were these increased costs, costs that were coming. Um, we talked about that. We put it forward. And as soon as we had a dollar figure to it, we put that dollar figure to it. And unfortunately, um, that wasn't uh, recognized or supported. And that's why we're in the situation right now where we're still talking about a half million dollars unfunded to our school budget, right? So yes, of course, we want to plan out five years and have the good conversations with the city and the city council and make sure everyone's on the same page with that. And we've tried to do that. And this is, and we're at a point right now where we did all the things we could to get in to have those good conversations and it still fell flat. And we're still struggling now with a budget that's, you know, not set up correctly. So I just wanted a little bit of rub on that, too, right?
So do you guys get contract? Like, is it a written contract with um uh? Is is there? Sorry, I I I am trying to understand your side of. Or transporting.
Transportation had a contract. It was set up for three years and for a certain number of buses. We knew when we were going to get.
We dumped that into our budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, who who is the custodian of that contract?
We are.
Who?
The school district?
The school district? Um, i- is it like a public information? Can I ask for that contract or how does that? That's going to be? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's sitting in my office if you want it.
Oh, okay. I'll come come see you for that. Okay.
Uh, so I and I would just say, just to be on the record, and I think everyone on this call knows, we put forward a level service budget every single year. Level service meaning the same services offered next year that we offered this year. That's not the same as a level budget. A level budget is the same exact dollar amount as you had to work with this year. A level service budget takes into account that costs go up for salaries, transportation, utilities. We put forward a level service budget. This is my fifth year here. I've never received a level service budget. So we we do attempt to plan for the future year. We've never, we've never received it yet. Well, we'll keep trying.
Yeah. Well, last year.
Yeah, I mean, we've all, every every department probably could say the same thing. So.
Yeah, last three years, nobody got the right, everybody, we we crunched the numbers last three years, absolutely.
Mm hmm.
I think, well, Megan, you had a third, maybe another question.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just say, um, in this level services budget was um like the key thing that the community was super invested in. So this, I mean, I think this is like the point to keep coming back to. We cannot have our school district go backwards in terms of services provided. Level services is a minimum goal, right? Like, growing our services is really the the goal for the children in the community. And this is why there were parents who were so fired up and there was like protests out there. This is what the the crux of the thing was. I just wanted to highlight that we really have to be thinking not just about level services, about growing services. What else do these kids need? If there's more that's needed.
So I feel like I'm picking up on there's, there is a a conversation with something Hadel said and something Dr. Leclerc said about sort of that I think actually something this committee is going to need to discuss, but maybe tonight isn't the the best time because I think it's like a probably a very big discussion of itself about sort of, but it it's easily teed off by uh Council Risk's question about sort of like, you know, is like about the, what are the best practices around the school, sort of keeping its own reserves versus just asking for like a different sized budget that then within the understanding that there's money left over, it reverts back to free cash, which I think is from my understanding is is some people on the city, that would be their preference. And there just reasons probably why that would be better or worse, depending on your perspective there. Um, I do think that perhaps this is like, if we want to get through these questions tonight, maybe that's a conversation that we we note is like, we should do it, but maybe this isn't.
Yeah.
Because I just feel like we could do that all night.
Yeah.
Um, Maren?
So two things real quickly. One is I've got to jump off this and then I'm gonna, I've got to, and then I'll jump back on it with my phone. So just look for me in the waiting room in just a moment. Um, the other thing is that I completely agree. That's a much bigger conversation. We'd love to have that. Um, it it's uh, it it's also that our school committee has state requirements as well. So it it's not just, we'd like to do it this way, we'd like to do it that way. We have requirements that we have to follow as well. And that the state school reserves is part of that mandate. So we can't just go with our own preference uh to be able to, you know, say, well, we're just going to have zero reserves and succumb to the city if we need to kind of thing. So there are requirements that we have to follow at the state level as a school committee and as a school department. And I think, so I just want to let into that.
I think under better understanding the requirements is something that would be really helpful for us. But again, I just, I think this could probably keep going for the next five hours if we let it.
And the and the state request that we have about a five percent school school reserve budget. So five percent of what we is is not even close to what we actually have. So the recommendate, we we've maintained a much lower amount than what the state recommends us to have. And we have tried to manage that as best we can. And part of Dale's work over her tenure was to get us up to even a reasonable amount so we could manage the fluctuations in cash that have been required of our department. So just want to add that there. But look me in the waiting room. We'll be back in just a moment.
Okay. Cindy, I saw you had your hand up. Uh, you're muted.
I forgot I muted myself. Um, yeah, Maren kind of touched on it. Um, historically, we um, we have tried to have that that million um for reserves because we need it quickly and it's what is recommended as like a minimum safety. Um, and if you look at the the last few years, you can see that we pull that way down when we don't get the money that we need in terms of our budget. We do use that to fill in so that we can hold on to those level services that Megan was talking about that are so precious to the community. Um, we can't just all of a sudden, it would be devastating to East Hampton to say, okay, well, we can't provide these services anymore. So we're going to do this, this and this. So we have these very careful conversations about how much of the reserve is it safe for us to use? And is there a shot of um building it back to a safety measure? Again, we don't, I'm a special ed teacher in another district and I can tell you, I get new kids every single year. Surprise, here's, here's a student. And that's great that we have this student, but what we didn't know is that that student needs a para, that needs, student needs all these extra services. And again, you've got to be be able to do that very quickly and just hire on the spot, fill that place. So it's 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 not something that can be done in a slow process.
Understood. And I think we all like, th- this is, right, the fact that you guys have to quickly make fiscal decisions and can't operate on super lean budget is something that I think we all agree on. I mean, I still think that, you know, there's probably conversations we could have about this stuff. But again, I think we would be here all day, but I I like, I think we can, we can all agree that one way or another, however it's structured, school department needs to be able to make relatively large financial decisions quickly and without doing anything that would compromise a student's privacy. I think we all
Yeah.
hundred percent agree on that.
Yeah. And we can talk about it.
But, yeah.
We're going to continue meeting so we can designate a particular night to talk about this part, a particular night to do that. So I agree. Thank you.
So I see Hadel's hand, and then I think we probably should move to question six.
Just a quick technical question. From the city side, at the reserve uh gets closed at the, so we have to, we have to make a reserve account available every fiscal year as a part of the budget. Does Desi has that kind of regulation? So our reserve is two hundred thousand dollars. We can't move move money out of it until it goes to city council. If we don't use whatever is not used, that closes to general fund at the end of the fiscal year. Does Desi has that kind of uh regulation? No?
No.
We're we're advised to mirror D L R with the, is it your general fund?
Yes, that's.
Supposed to have like five percent of your city.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're supposed.
Practices.
Yeah, Desi, that's the best practice that we're supposed to mirror in a school district.
Yeah, so we do that, but at the end of the fiscal year, it expires. And then we do the same thing again for the new budget year. So that's what my question is. Do, does Desi has that regulation?
It doesn't expire because it's sitting in a revolving fund. I, you know, that's that's why it's it's the the school revolving funds are strictly governed by the Department of Revenue, and there's only certain revolving funds that can even exist. Uh, you know, I believe I sent you that chart back in the summer of the different types of revolving funds.
Foreign language for me. I need assistance.
Oh, it's all good. I will assist you in any way I can. But, you know, your school, you would see the school choice revolving account on that chart.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's do question six.
Okay, um, question six, um, Red. I see a sheet entitled FY twenty three budget options. I assume reductions if you don't receive additional funding. Is this correct? Please explain. Um, so the the sheet is referring to, it was kind of different budget scenarios that were, you know, coming into play um during the the development of this year's budget. Um, I'm not sure exactly when that sheet was created. Of course, it wasn't here yet, but um, the options included on that sheet are are three different percent increases in non-fixed costs. Um, you would see on on that sheet that transportation and tuition um in each of the three scenarios were not reduced because they they can't be. I mean, that either due to mass general law or due to students' I E Ps. I mean, those those are fixed costs that you can't reduce. Um, the different percent increases listed were based on different scenarios of restoring positions that were originally proposed to be eliminated. Um, you know, where we ended up, if we don't receive additional funding, we would either have to reduce positions during the school year, which would lead to layoffs as well as the inability for us to properly provide services to our students. Um, or the school choice uh account would have to be used to cover the shortfall. Um, which, you know, as I mentioned earlier, this would lead to less school choice funding available. Um, you know, for needs mentioned um in, you know, past answers to questions this evening. Um, this becomes particularly problematic as we inch closer to the end of um the USR dollars, really. I I mean, you know, depending on how many positions we end up needing to keep and how much is able to actually be absorbed into the local budget. You know, you may see school choice paying for a position or two that that is currently USR funded. So, you know, i- i- if we spend more than we anticipate out of there this year, that's going to put us in a in a bigger conundrum, if you will, uh, when we get to the end of next year.
All right. That made sense to me. Anyone else have any questions?
I would just add that we developed that sheet to present to the school committee during the budget process. School committee approves our budget. Um, so we offered them options and the school committee felt very strongly that they did not want to reduce physicians. They did not want to offer anything below a level service budget. So that was the choice the committee voted. But we wanted to show you the options.
So that's the context of of that, those options in the sheet. That makes, that's kind of what I thought, but thanks for clarifying. Anything else on this point? Or do we want to move? I mean, I've only got three and the first one we can just skip because we already answered it from Dan's. Anything else on this point? Or do we want to move? I mean, I've only got three and the first one we can just skip because we already answered it from Dan's.
All right, um, so Counselor Peak, your second question. Um, was in your budget factors letter, very helpful, by the way. Uh, Massachusetts approved special education private school tuition rates should increase by 14% in FY24. Is there anything the district or the city could do to mitigate this? Uh, for example, would some sort of investment in programming or staff now result in a lower number of these students enrolling in private schools? Would that even be cost effective? Um, so there's, there's a few parts to this. Um, so. The 14% increase at this moment in time is technically, it's, I mean, it's not approved yet. Um, but rather it's an estimated rate of inflation for social services programs. Which the OSD, the um Operational Services Division arm um of our, our state government. Uh, must provide to the Executive Office of Administration and Finance by October 1st each year. Um, to be used in preparation for the governor's annual budget recommendation. That being said, these estimated rates don't tend to change much when the actual numbers come out. So. Uh, we're, we're looking at about 14%. Um, this tuition increases for private out of district special education schools and would also apply to out of state approved special education schools. Um, those are two different lists and we get both of them from the OSD. Um, not much can be done to mitigate this. Uh, I mean. Our schools, as Dr. Leclerc mentioned earlier, have um several substantially separate programs for students whose needs are greater than can be met in the, the general education setting. Um, and those programs keep many students in districts uh who would otherwise be placed in an out of district setting.
Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. Um, but there are a small number of students who do require more support that can be provided in our schools. Um, we make every attempt to keep students in their home schools, um, which, you know, not only is, is of course the morally right thing to do. But we're also required by law to provide students an education in what is referred to as a least restrictive environment. Um, at times it can be cost effective to hire a one-to-one para educator to support a student in one of our schools. And we certainly do have some of, some of those on our, our staff. Um, but the reality is that it all depends on the student and their own individual particular needs. Um, over the, the time that um our special ed director, uh Sarah Mochack has been in our district. Um, we've created six specialized programs in order to keep students in their home schools. Um, and including two new ones um when Mountain View opened in September of this year. So, you know, we are doing the types of things that your question was asking in, in terms of attempting to mitigate it as much as we can. Um, but there are just some students whose needs are, are greater than what can be, you know, done in, in our district.
Totally understood. Yeah, I mean, I just. And I, when I did, when I got the tour, I saw sort of the, the room that was set up. I thought that was really cool. Um. I just want, like, I was just thinking of this because this was a. Just an example from, from the city side where if there were something. With, with those programs where we could say, hey. If we spend X dollars now, we're gonna save more dollars.
We always look at that.
Then, then that's something that where I think that would be, that could potentially, I'm not the one who would ultimately make that call, but that would be very interesting to me, you know. Um, uh, so yeah, uh, but thanks for that. That was helpful.
Of course. Um, your third question um stated, I have a good understanding of the timeline for the city's operating budget, or at least the city council side of it. But when it comes to the other money coming into the city, I don't really have a good sense of the dates or processes involved there. For example, with the circuit breaker and school choice funds, when does the district receive them? How are they calculated? And at what point does the district know what they will be? Um, also, uh, this is a bit embarrassing because I know you've explained it before, but I'm not, still not entirely sure I understand circuit breaker. That's okay. I will totally understand and circuit breaker. Um, I'm not sure why it's called that. I, you know, when I think of the circuit breaker, I think of the service panel in my basement. Um, but you know. Um, to answer your, your question, our, our circuit breaker, it's. First of all, it's basically special ed reimbursement that's paid to us on a quarterly basis. Um, school choice payments are made on a monthly basis. Uh, for grants, um, basically when a grant is approved, we get 10% right away. Um, remaining grant funds have to be requested each month during a specific time period, um, you know, until they're used up. So basically, say I get a $10,000 grant. Once it's approved, the city will get the thousand bucks right away, 10%. Then as I start spending um on expenses that are going to be charged to the grant. Each month I, what we call, it's called the drawdown period. And, and basically what you're doing is getting reimbursement for the expenses that you're spending that are going to be charged to the grant. Once the grant runs out, then of course you don't draw down any more funds and, and you close it. So, um, you know, the different sources of revenue do come in at different times. So I, I hope that's helpful in answering that.
Okay, but a lot of it is occurring monthly. It's not like the circuit breaker randomly comes in. November and that's just like, you know, well, there's this, because that's how like free cash is for the city, you know, is there's just like a date where. Free cash gets certified. Until then, we don't even know what it is. And then we actually receive.
Circuit breaker, we don't exactly know what it is.
No.
It just came in this month.
Yeah, it came in like two, three days ago or something like that. It, it, it was very late this year, but I'll, I'll touch upon that when I answer the rest of your question here.
Okay, great.
So Circuit Breaker is a special, or sorry, a state special education reimbursement program. That was created nearly 20 years ago to provide additional state funding to districts for high-cost special education students. Um, the threshold for eligibility is tied to four times the state average foundation budget per pupil. As calculated under the Chapter 70 program, with the state paying up to 75% of the costs that are above the threshold. Let me stop there because that may be confusing, but anybody.
That'll make sense.
Um, you know, so basically.
A lot of calculation and work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Director Mochack works tirelessly to fill out the circuit breaker claim form each year. But, you know, basically if. You know, per the state's Chapter 70 formula, if the average cost to educate a student in Massachusetts is $10,000, I'm just using that as a ballpark figure. It's more than that, but. Um, and then we had a student that, that was in our district that it cost us $50,000 to educate. That student would meet the threshold. Um, so basically we would be reimbursed up to 75% of anything that goes beyond four times the 10,000. So for the, for the $10,000 that goes between the 40 and the 50,000, we could get up to 75% of that in reimbursement or 7,500 bucks for that student.
The fall of the year.
But you're still. First 40,000.
Yeah, the first 40,000, we're on the hook for that, yes.
Yeah.
Um, I believe we claimed 28 students last year. Um, and that's how many went into it. So anyway, there's a claim form that the district must submit to Desi by, I think it's. Early July. I typed in my notes June 30th, but I think it's like the end of the first week of July. Um, that are, that Director Mochack has to submit, and it details all of the costs that meet that threshold. Um. We can forecast it to the best of our ability, like, you know, Director Mochack knows who's gonna be. You know, first of all, kids that are placed in out of district settings. I know we talked about them a lot this evening, but they're all gonna meet the threshold. Um, but then there are students in district as well that may have a one-to-one para educator or just require an awful lot of related services. So she knows who's, who those kids are. So we can kind of fill out our own little template form, if you will, during the budget development process to give ourselves the best idea. Um, you know, and of course we, we factor in the 75% reimbursement piece that, that goes with it. Now, so we, we will have a decent idea of what we're gonna get from Circuit Breaker. Um, I, I would say that that's. Probably the hardest of our additional funding sources to calculate. Um, grants are grants. If you get one, you see the amount, you know, it's kind of, the school choice is based on the slots you have. Circuit breaker can be a bit of a, a moving target. Um. But we certainly factor it in during the, um, the budget development process. Um, Desi does not usually announce the actual reimbursement rates until October. Um, they were late this year because um last year was the first year we could claim transportation expenses. Um, so it took them longer to do what they need to do on their end. But we finally got, I think it was, was it last Friday? We finally got our, um, our, our number, um, which was, which was good to, to have. The reimbursement that we get is for costs from the previous fiscal year. So all the circuit breaker revenue we get this year is for kids we claimed from last year. Um, and then what we get each year must be expended by the end of the following fiscal year. So really you can carry over what you get for an additional year. So basically, you know, what we get this year. We have to spend by the end of next year. And so forth. The cycle repeats itself.
By next year, you mean fiscal year 2024?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. Um, so you know, if we got $100,000 in circuit breaker this year. And then $100,000 in circuit breaker in FY24, at the end of FY24, we would have had to have spent that first 100,000. That, that came in this year.
Right.
Um, as of last year, uh, we were able, as I said, to claim transportation costs and that came through the Student Opportunity Act. Um, and which is good. It's going to increase the reimbursement that districts get. Um, but you know, our, our reimbursement funding is used to fund special education costs. It can only be used for that, you know, we can't. Pay for a classroom teacher in a regular ed setting. Um, you, you know, primarily we would fund out of district tuitions with it. Um, you know, but sometimes would, would pay for related services, like we contract out our physical therapy. Um, you know, it can be used for that and transportation too. That's another thing I can pay for.
If I could just add, just, I, I don't want people on the call to. Jump to the conclusion, oh, if we get a lot of circuit breaker money, maybe we could offset some of the district. Money. We could use that in different ways. We are required by state law, by the Department of Education to maintain maintenance of effort. In our special education district costs. So if we go below what we spent in the previous year in our special education department. We are, we're red flagged by the Department of Education. So we have to continue to at least have the minimum that we had the previous year in our special education costs. We can't supplant with circuit breaker money.
Right. And also if you're spending.
There's a maintenance of effort law that we, you know, there's rules we have to maintain.
Right. And. I don't think anyone on the council is suggesting that we get stingy with the specialism.
Right.
I think, I, and the other thing about it is that frankly, if you're only getting 75% of what you spent, and that's only after the four times the foundation budget. Then, you know, this is, it's sort of like the stuff with the.
Definitely, yeah.
With the, with the, the chapter 70 or 90, whichever one it is with the roads. It's like, it's never gonna actually cover all of it. There's no way you actually make a profit on it. It just cuts some of your losses.
Yeah, that, that's not, yeah, the purpose is not profit. Yeah, certainly. It's just, it's reimbursement for what you've already spent.
Right. Okay, great.
Um, I did have another um part to answer your question um about the school choice. Um, our school choice payment is based on the number of school choice slots that we have open, a- as we mentioned earlier. Um, as well as on the needs of the students who fill them. Um, I told you the base uh payment is 5,000 per student, but ones who require special services, uh, the payment may be higher based on their needs. Um, there, there's not, you know, that many, but certainly some students, um, there's a special ed increment tied to their coming here. Um, during the budget development process, we get um a school choice revenue estimate. Um, from the preliminary cherry sheet that gets released by the state at the end of, you know, January. That's where we get our initial, what we think we're gonna get for school choice revenue. Uh, does it ever end up being exactly that? No, you know, when the final cherry sheet comes out, you'll have a slightly different figure. And then at the end of the year, when, you know, we, we have to do a claim form each April for the kids that were choice in. Um, that's when the final tally will, will be in. And oftentimes, Desi will then, you know, send us more than they anticipated. Not much more, but you, you know, it, it, that, that's really when the final figure is in, which won't actually happen till next June. Um, but you know, the cherry sheet does give us a good base, you know, because it's more, usually more conservative of an estimate than what's actually gonna happen. So, you know, we would base our revenue projection on that. And, you know, that's where that $747,000 figure came from that I mentioned is right off the cherry sheet from last year, or from this year, rather.
Great. All right, thanks. I think I understand that slightly better.
Great.
Will be a test.
Um, hey, uh, Counselor Denham had a few questions too. And then I wanted to throw this out there, that after those questions. I know that there's a second thing on our agenda to have a discussion of free cash uses, but I've kind of been drinking from a fire hose this whole time. And I'm kind of wondering if we just want to call it after the questions, like, I don't know if I'm ready to have like a big. Like high concept conversation about something else after this. I, this has been incredibly helpful and I feel like I understand like. 10 times as much stuff as I did coming in, but I'm, I am just wondering if maybe. Like that's something we should do when we're fresh, just a thought. Everyone good with that?
Good with that.
Cool.
Sounds good to me.
All right, so I'll move on to Counselor Denham's um, um, question. So y- your first one, um, you were looking for a greater understanding of what was, you know, basically what we were trying to accomplish with our school budget. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, and some of that had to do with, uh, like I said before, it had to do with trying to understand the. ESSR funds, uh, et cetera. And so that's, I didn't know how to kind of articulate that particular question in terms of. Uh, because I know there was just a large conversation about. Spending down this money, et cetera. And so just trying to understand what you were trying to accomplish, but. It. It, in kind of the explanation of what you were describing, and then my follow-up question to try to understand that. Kind of informed that particular question, so.
Okay, so that was focusing on, on specifically ESSR funds and not on your budget as a whole. Okay. I interpret it as our larger budget as, as a whole. Uh, but if you were uh thinking about the ESSR funds, I, I think we've probably answered that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so I can move on to number two then. Um. You also wanted to know more about when the different funds come into the budget. Um, you know, our, our, our local appropriation gets to us after the city council votes the budget. Um, you know, and then the new fiscal year begins, then, you know. I, I'm not really sure what happens on the auditor side, but eventually we're told we can put our budget into our accounting software and, and we're good to go. Um, you know, the other funding sources, as I mentioned when I answered Counselor Peak's question, do come at different times. And, you know, we can anticipate them. As I said, the school choice will come in once a month. Um, they, oh, another funding source I, I didn't mention, I mean, it's not really gonna impact this, but our, our food service reimbursements for meals. That'll come in once a month as well. Um, you know, it's, you don't see it as part of our local budget at all, but you know, it's in our food service revolving account. And, you know, it just, it pays for our, our Chartwells, um, you know, who we contract with. That's the vendor that does our, our school meet. So, um, every month, um, we submit a claim form to the USDA. And, you know, they'll process that and, you know, we'll get reimbursements for that too, so. Um, do you feel that you have a better understanding now of when the different funds come in?
Yeah, I think the last kind of two questions that Counselor Peak also asked were kind of in, informed, informed that. So that was very helpful.
Okay. All right. So then I'll move on to your, oh, um, Hadal is a question.
Uh, Hadal.
Yeah. So just to wrap, uh, tell you the second, uh, of city side of what Nick was mentioning, what happens on the school side. He mentioned city side. I get the grant paperwork. I set up in the account, uh, set up the new account. When money comes in, it goes into that from treasurer's office. And when they, when the school department decides to spend it on their warrant, it hits the warrant side. And that's the full picture. So school side, Nick, Nick explained, city side, I just explained.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
All right, so your, um, your third question was, um. All right, so your your third question was stated that it would be helpful to you to understand the approach to filling our budget gaps. And you asked why the gaps can't be filled towards the end of the fiscal cycle, rather than now.
Also answered, right, so it, it made sense.
I think there's a little I'd like to add, though.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we we feel that it's very important to fill the gaps as early as possible. And some of it really just has to do with procurement law. You know, we can't encumber money for purchases unless there's an actual appropriation there. So, you know, for example, if we're short $300,000, I can't create a purchase order to pay a bill that would have been funded with any of that $300,000. Because many of our expenses are the result of contracts, an appropriation must be there to fund them, or else the the contract essentially isn't legal. Most of the remainder of our expenses is in salaries, as you know, it's over 70%. The thing that makes the school budget, I think, unique in terms of the remainder of the city budgets is I I think that we know far more of our expenses and needs at the beginning. I I think other departments probably end up with more unanticipated costs than we do. Like, like, we have a picture of what our expenses are going to be right at the beginning. And, you know, we're not looking for any sort of appropriation to cover potential unanticipated costs here. I mean, that that's what our school choice is for, as we've mentioned. We're looking to cover the costs that we already know we have. You know, we're in the process right now of forecasting, you know, just how large of a gap that will be, you know, now that we're in the quarter two of the fiscal year. You know, is it that full 561,000 or or is it less? You know, we do, but we certainly do not intend to ask for anything larger than we need to cover our costs. You know, a lot of departments, I think, might come to the city council at the end of a fiscal cycle to ask for an appropriation because maybe their overtime budget was way beyond what they expected, which is going to happen with fire and police and other departments, depending on what what happens. Our budget doesn't work that way. I mean, we do budget for overtime, but we're strict with it in terms of like, you know, this is what we have, and we we really don't allow people to work beyond that, but we can get away with it. We're not an emergency response service, you know what I mean? Other departments function differently. So, like, our our costs are are far more known going in. So we, you know, we base our budget on that and not on a bunch of unanticipated things.
Yeah, that was helpful. It sounds like you have a few big unanticipated things that happen, but, but, yeah, I mean, not, I mean, it's certainly, like, over time, you've probably got it. It's a different situation.
Right.
Okay, great. Was that, was that all of your questions, Counselor Denham?
Yeah, like I said, some of it was answered through your questions, and so it helped me to kind of understand those pieces, as well as kind of the circuit breaker and the revolving, right, like, trying to understand when do those budgets come into play and to kind of cover what when.
Right. Well, I just want to thank everyone involved because I really do feel like, just over the course of this conversation, there were things that were said that made me flashback to the budget season and the things that were being said there, times where people were, maybe things got a little intense, and there were just things that weren't clicking, where we didn't necessarily, like, there just, there was just some stuff I didn't, like, not say we all agree on everything now, but I think, like, I do, I think I do understand better now, sort of the the mindset that, and and sort of the, and the, the, sort of the business climate that that you're operating in. So I really do think it's going to probably take me a couple of days to fully process everything, and I I might have some follow-up questions, but I per, I can't speak to, you know, my colleagues, but I personally feel like I I know a lot more. And if nothing else comes of this, then come in, like, come budget season, I feel like I'm going to be better prepared to understand and be a a meaningful participant in those conversations.
That's all we hope, though.
Great. All right, so from, if there's nothing else, then on the council side, I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless anybody has anything else they want to bring up.
So moved.
I just want to add one little comment here, if I can. I just want, I really appreciate your comments there, Thomas. And I just really appreciate this opportunity for us to be able to come together. I think it's really helpful, especially when we're outside of the pressure of budget season, to be able to help make sure that everyone does understand. I think that the school budget, you know, this is going to be the sixth year of school budgets that I've been involved with. And it, there's, it is complex. There is a lot of known things, a lot of unknown things that we're budgeting. There are a lot of different revenue sources and different factors that go into that. And we are all trying to do our best. I forget who said that, that this is not about creating profit. We're not in the business to create profit. We are managing a lot of different pieces and trying to do the best we can for our students. So I'm glad that we're able to come together and and provide more information for you all out of that pressure time of of the budget season.
Great.
Thank you.
Unless there's anything else, I will, I will second my Counselor Denham's motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then I also need to make a motion to end the meeting for the school committee. By next step, can you have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. We all vote to end the meeting. Aye.
Aye.
She said aye.
I got it.
You did, but I meant aye.
All right. Well, this joint meeting is thus adjourned. Thank you for your time and your help, everybody.